Five, we'll call the planning board meeting to order at this time. The first on the agenda will be the approval of bills. We have a bill from PVPC. It's like for periods covering October 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018. Total amount due is $1,612.04.
I'll make a motion that we approve the PVPC bill for the amount just stated.
Second?
Go any further? I know before when we're looking at these in the past and a lot of the explanation as to what was being billed for what particular-
What jobs?
What jobs. So I'm just looking at this here. It says services provided and it lists several. But it's not kind of broken down into what areas.
Yeah, we had that on the last bill. That's the one.
Now I know that's connected to certain sort of past. So we know what-
Yeah, the project name and then the hours.
Okay.
Can you double check? It looks like those are very fast.
This must have been- She must have attended one of these meetings when I was out in regards to planning research analysis pertaining to proposed solar moratorium attended planning board meeting.
That's probably one of the meetings she was here at.
Yeah, I was probably out of town. That doesn't sound familiar.
So obviously the motion on the table spent second. I don't have a fa- I don't have a problem bringing the motion to a vote, obviously. But I'd like to have this detailed invoice before it's paid though.
So-
I will rescind the motion.
Rescind the motion and make a condition pending.
I will rescind my motion. I will make a motion that we we receive confirmation and or the schedule of the fees.
Itemizing, please.
Itemizing the, from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, itemizing the invoice.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So you're approving the bill right now, correct?
We want to-
Because you rescinded them.
Well, we approved it, but we want to itemize list of all the-
Well, we didn't call for a vote to approve.
Right, we want to, you know, we rescinded that, got itemized, we voted for itemized list of all the bills, so when I can pay this, we receive that. And that just goes back to what we've asked for in the past as well, so we were on that track for a little while. We'll get back on it. That was before you, in between Larry and-
Susan, right.
Well, it needs to be broken up per project because if we have to-
Well, for charging for certain projects, right, and people are giving us, they're putting I'll say retaining, but they're putting money in escrow and you know what's-
Right.
We need to charge.
Yeah.
Yes, we can go back and put it in escrow.
Right.
Right. So that's going to be the actual itemized, project A was, this amount of time, this amount of bills that project. So we know. That was the only bill we had?
Yes.
Correct.
We have approved minutes, approved the minutes from Thursday, February 14th.
We got two sets of them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have the 11th and 14th, and Jim has the 14th and the 14th.
I gave him extra time. So we have the minutes from Monday, February 11th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 11th, 2019 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 14th, 2019 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Do we have any minutes from 2019?
The, sorry, Thursday, February 14th, one.
Yeah.
None of the members at the joint select board, planning board meeting were able to keep minutes. We we should thought that we might be able to get a copy of Kathy Leonard's minutes as well as the tape.
But we still have to make up our own on all that. I'll see what I can do, but I'm sure Kathy's minutes just reflect the selectors what they were dealing with.
Well, it was a joint meeting, so whatever was being said, she was recording it, so-
Right.
How much were we made on both sides of the table? I would imagine that would all be in split up. Let me check with Kathy.
As you have said, in a meeting like that where you're trying to discuss things, there's just no way you can keep minutes.
Well, that's our meeting here.
Yes, and that's why we gotta do something. And we never, speaking of minutes, we have never discussed advertising in a larger newspaper, have we?
Well, we advertised in the Chicopee Sentinel like that, but not in like the-
Republican or the Hampshire Gazette. I think that's our next step. To advertise for a recording secretary.
I would definitely need one of those.
Yes.
We've said it over and over again. So I'm going to look to advertise in the Hampshire Gazette.
Do you want me to just find out how much and then come back with the price or so that you can vote on spending that now? Make it official?
Yeah, we can do that. If it's me, we can just vote.
Yeah.
Is there anybody in town that doesn't have further boards that you could just grab onto?
We've tried, we've tried several times, it's been advertised. Just have an handle.
Well, you can't do it.
We had, we had not, we had one person that was interested in it and then that ended up failing.
Didn't follow up, that person was from East Brooklyn, which is kind of a hall that night.
Correspondents? So it's a public hearing notice for Grammy Planning Board. In regards to correspondence, Grammy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on March 4th, 2019 at 5:00 PM. The old Carriage Library, top floor meeting room. One library lane, Grammy Mass, to consider the application for CB, CPV Red Rock Solar LLC, three Lyon Street, Grammy Mass, 01033, for a special permit and site plan approval as required in the following section of Grammy zoning by law. Section 3.0, Table 1, Schedule for Use Regulations, Section 5.99, Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Insulations, Section 6.2, Special Permits, and Section 6.3, Site Plan Approval. The advocate process to, the advocate proposes to install a 3.0 megawatt DC large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facility approximately 21 acres of approximately 76 acre site comprised of four body parcels on east of Lyon Street. Assessors parcel ID 17A-39, 17-A40, 17A-41.1, which are located in town of Grammy, and parcel ID 20-4C, which is located in town of Ludlow. We also have a legal notice for Ludlow Planning Board. They're having a hearing, some of the property boarders from Ludlow as well. All four parcels are owned by James Meraki, JLN Properties, five Lyon Street, Grammy Mass, 01033. The site is located within residential, single-family RS zoning district. Complete application and plans are available for public inspections during regular business hours, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to noon on Fridays, at the Selectman's Office located in the Grammy Senior Center Building, 10B West Eight Street, Grammy Mass, 01033. Anyone wishing for information and/or to be heard on this matter should appear at that time or place designated. Hang on to this one, pass it around, it's from town Ludlow Planning Board.
They're meeting February 28th.
So some of their property boarders are property to Ludlow, Grammy Lyon.
Did you want to see the Ludlow one or do you-
Pardon?
Do you want to see the Ludlow public hearing notice? I assume you worked with Kathy?
Yes, I did, right.
There's a very short.
I am available Thursday, I'm trying to make the Ludlow one, just for that part of effect, yeah, I will.
Unless my brother's in the hospital, I don't know.
Old business information, January 7th, 2019 letter from the Select Board, the Garden, Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Energy Systems Moratorium. We met with the, what should we say, we met with the Select Board. It was past Tuesday, or last Tuesday. So that's already been addressed.
So it seems that isn't there, what happened?
Loud discussion back and forth between reasons for a moratorium, why we need to not have a moratorium, reasons why we should look at having new bylaws, reasons what the bylaw should be, maybe represent the pros and cons about solar farms.
So what was the meeting for, just to throw out suggestions or to?
I think it more of was a meeting to find out exactly what the Select Board wanted, was asking of the Planning Board, and the reason why, where they look into have the Planning Board look at zoning in regards to solar farms and solar installation.
As far as looking at our bylaws and maybe changing a few things, is that?
Well, that's, that's part was suggested whether or not we think they should be changed, is necessary to change them, and start the process of changing or not changing them, but start the process to review, I would say, possible changes to-
So we should start?
Yes, yes.
No, I don't think there was a clear concise agreement.
You took the two boards?
Correct.
But I think they did submit the article to the Planning Board, so you do have to advance it forward, bring it to town meeting. Whether you support it or not is a different question, but once it's been submitted to you by the Selectmen, you have to act on it, so you have to hold a public hearing where, you know, people can come and talk about it and you form an opinion whether you would recommend it or not to town meeting. And I think at, at the meeting, you know, the Planning Board members were thinking that, you know, why not just go forward with some amendments to the existing solar regulations and, you know, solar bylaw now. So you could do that in parallel, so that you might have two articles, one would be the moratorium, and then if you're ready with changes, you could bring those forward. Or if the moratorium was enacted, you'd then have a couple of months to, to work on the bylaw and then bring changes forward after that.
But if this board, I'm just speaking out loud, obviously, if this board doesn't agree to a moratorium, feel it's the right way to go, why would this, how does the Select Board dictate what the Planning Board has to do?
Well, because they have, under Chapter 40A, they have the right to submit articles to you. So once, once it's submitted to you by them, you have to, you know, treat it as a, as a proposed zoning amendment and then, you know, go through the process.
But it's not really a zoning amendment.
It is the way it's been worded this time. The initial one from the last town meeting was very unclear, and I think it was a general bylaw. But that was passed over and then they've, have since advanced a zoning article. And so since the Planning Board, so to the keeper of the zoning bylaw, it's your job to evaluate the merit of the article, hold the public hearing and then advise town meeting.
On a moratorium, see, the way I understood it, and I've got a call in the town council for clarification, he hasn't gotten back to me yet. We're responsible for articles that are, that are, that pertain to zoning changes, not moratoriums.
This is a zoning article though. It's a moratorium as a zoning amendment. Because a solar bylaw is a zoning bylaw. To enact a moratorium on that, you need to have a zoning amendment to do the moratorium.
So-
It's not, but it's not, it's not, just, sorry, just, we're not amending any zoning. We're, what they've requested us to do is put up moratorium to stop what the voters had already approved us to do.
Well, it's, this article will go to town meeting for the voters to decide whether to adopt the moratorium or not. The Planning Board's rule is to advise town meeting whether they think it's, whether you think it's a good idea or not. But they don't have to follow your recommendation.
So the, the Planning Board is the vehicle, if you will, to bring that to the town for the town meeting. That's all.
Yes.
Whether they can, whether they want to support it or not support it, the pros and the cons.
Only in the zoning bylaws.
What's that?
Right.
Only in the zoning bylaws.
Yes, right, you don't have a role in general bylaws.
But what, at what point in time are the Selectmen overreaching their bounds by putting this together? And it was very, at least it was clear to me, at Tuesday's meeting, there was only one member of the Select Board that was in favor of this.
Yeah, I asked town administrator that question and he said, no, it's been, it's the formal submission to the Planning Board. So that the Selectmen have submitted it to you and they decided to continue that submission. They could have withdrawn it if they wanted to, but they didn't, so until you hear otherwise, it's been submitted to you.
Interesting.
So they, they made that up on the premise of a yes vote from all the Select Board or a majority?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Okay.
Because it wasn't the Select Board. It was a single member of the Select Board that apparently pushed this whole thing.
Pushed the-
Moratorium, the whole thing about the solar.
But if the other two agree, or at least one more agree, then?
I don't know, I know that one didn't agree, I believe I know that one didn't agree. I think what had come out in the meeting this past Tuesday night, that another member didn't agree with it.
But that isn't the way that member voted.
That is the way that member voted before town meeting.
At the, when it was pulled, you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Can I make a recommendation here? I think we should take out the, the the information that Jay got from the state, how we got it, I don't, I'm not sure, but the recommendations that the state has put forward to, to the towns, cities and towns in Massachusetts.
Guidelines.
The guidelines, and let's take a look at those and go through those, item by item, to see, by doing our diligence, to see if any of those should or could apply here in town, that we, that we would want to move forward to a town meeting. And then, whether or not the request that they put together for a moratorium has any merit, we'll, we should move forward, assuming it does. And if it doesn't, and the board doesn't feel it's necessary, then we, then we can stop, stop the proceeds on that, that piece of it. So to Bill's point, we should, we should be in parallel, we should be moving forward with both for the time, for the time being.
You're running very short on time then, if you're planning for the May town meeting, because we have to get all of our bylaw changes to the Select Board by March 13th, that's two weeks.
And that was brought up.
Well, we, we probably wouldn't be able to get that done and have a hearing and all that.
If you did the moratorium, if the, if you did the moratorium, then you'd have more time to, you wouldn't have to rush through. We can get all these others done and out of the way and focus on that one.
For later town meeting.
Yes. But you'd have to put the moratorium, well, you wouldn't have to put the moratorium in, right? You could just leave it as is, but you still have to hold a public hearing right for the letter that the Select Board sent.
Until they withdraw it, you have to treat it as a live proposal.
Just a public hearing?
Well, they, they will put it on the warrant for town meeting. And in order for town meeting to vote on it, the Planning Board has to have a public hearing. So you have to move forward with the public hearing on the article if it's, if the Selectmen decide to, to keep it on the warrant.
Then that, that would, okay, I'm trying to get all the logistics straight, that would mean that that potential moratorium would be voted on at the special town meeting in May?
Yes.
But nothing says that, that it has to be considered at that town meeting.
Well, no, it, it does say that, you know, you do have to treat it as a live article and fulfill your role as the keeper of the zoning bylaw.
But it doesn't say that it has to happen in May, it could happen at another special town meeting or town meeting.
Well, I mean, I think the intent is-
Looking across.
To do it at the, in the spring.
I don't know how much it costs, but are you looking for Kathy to go?
Yes. So the article as worded would enact, you know, if it's approved by town meeting, would enact a moratorium through September 30th. So I think it's clear that they want you to bring it forward for this annual town meeting, or special town meeting in May. Otherwise, they want to put the deadline in to September 30th. So I mean, it's, 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 the article's already prepared for you, I don't think you can modify it. I would just include this with all your other zoning amendments. Advertise it and then hold a hearing and let people come and-
So put it on the schedule with the others?
With all, all your other articles, correct.
I wholeheartedly disagree with this whole process. I don't want that now.
So it says that the moratorium will be in place till September 30th, 2019, or until such time as the zoning, the zoning is announced, after zoning or general bylaws. But I thought a moratorium could only be in place for so long, that's-
Yeah, that's a little-
So that's actually not true then.
I'm not sure that's really proper wording. I don't think, you can leave it open-ended like that. Because it does, this says, as the chair just mentioned, through September 30th or until such time as the town adopts a zoning bylaw. I don't think you can leave it that open-ended. So I think you'd have to-
And then the, the information I showed you the other-
That's right, it was six months or something.
Six months, but anything longer than that was considered land grabbing, you know, legal by the US, so.
So you normally have a fall town meeting?
Yes, May and September, right?
So I think if you said until fall, special town meeting, you, you know, that would be acceptable.
But it still has to go through the May.
It has to go on the May, right.
To put the moratorium in, if.
I want, I want me to, I want town conference.
Well, my, my question is, as this reads now, is it technically legal to state that?
The letter is.
I would, I would modify that language.
That particular spot?
What's that?
That particular spot in the line.
See, push your chair away, let's ready to run for the door.
So if people are wondering in the audience, what we're looking at, it's very windy out this evening and they're just starting to rattle a little bit. So what's the suggestion on this board, to, to look at, start looking at, change the zoning bylaws, or just move forward with the possible?
At the joint Select Board Planning Board meeting, the town administrator said that he would email all of us the following day, the guidelines, and there was something else that the state has proposed. I don't know if anybody else has received anything, but I have not.
Question for Chris.
Are you going to do that?
Yes.
I went online and looked for that information, I could find something that was dated to 2014, but I think Mr. Joyce mentioned there was something more recent than that. So I, I have, I have the guidance dated March of 2014. The most current one, then that's fine, but I understood there was something more recent. Pardon?
The one from the state?
Yes. But you're right, the town administrator did agree to forward the most recent information that he had.
Yeah, because there was also some information about, one of the things that was brought up was about forming an electrical commissioner. Commission to municipal.
Municipal utility, right?
Yeah, utility company, yeah. Which Grammy can do?
When's the Select Board meeting again?
Right then.
Next Monday.
Next Monday?
So to move forward, forward with this, what we need to do is have a public hearing? Let the public know what our intentions are?
Yes.
So the next step is scheduling a public hearing.
Right. You had the schedule of dates?
I look like you have the town council.
Well, we're...
I am, I am a single member of the board here.
I'm just thinking of the, how, how long do we have to respond?
I personally don't care about the time, in all honesty. I mean, that special town meeting could've been scheduled for April 1st. So...
No, what I'm saying is, do we have a time limit to respond by Massachusetts general law? Do we have a certain number of days that we have to respond to the Select Board's moratorium letter suggestion?
Request.
Yes.
I mean, I think you should act on it for this upcoming special town meeting.
But, so if we, if we went first to get a response, an opinion from town council as the next step?
Right, you could do that, for sure. So, Lil, your schedule was to hold the public hearing on April 22nd, and to advertise on April 5th, so you still have a month before you need to do the advertisement. So town council could certainly advise you as to, you know, what your role is.
In, in plenty of time, because we still have to have it, if town council says, "That's fine, that's it, go ahead, you have to respond," you have to hold a public hearing. Our first one, our first public hearing for all these other bylaws is April 5th. But before that, we have to send everything to the Select Board so they can get it ready for the public, uh, town, special town meeting, for the warrant.
Right.
Would we have to do that with this? Do we have to get town council's response in a week, or less?
Well, I mean, I think you have a suggestion.
How do we send it, how do we send it to the Select Board if we haven't had our public hearings yet, to people to discuss the bylaws?
First, what was the question?
How, how do we send the informa, how do we send that to the Select Board before we have our public hearings?
Well, we don't have to, we don't have to submit the, the proposed changes to the bylaws, just the moratorium.
Okay.
Every town does it differently, whether you just need to have a placeholder for the warrant, or if you need to have draft language submitted, I don't, I don't know what your protocol is.
See, this is being called a proposed amendment.
I think all amendments are proposed until they're approved.
Matt, I don't see why you shouldn't ask town council his advice on this matter. I mean, it's pretty significant.
And in the meantime, I think, since the Select Board has, um, well, I don't know if they have, but they have changed their thoughts on this process based on the last town, town meeting, they should send us another letter requesting it. And, and it shouldn't be identifying it or, or calling out, or indefinitely here where it says the moratorium could be six months or, we gotta be more specific than that.
You're saying this, if I could say it, a specific date?
I think that's, that's a good point.
Yeah, otherwise it's kind of confusing.
Well, it's not just confusing, it's, there's also the question whether that's actually legal to do that or not.
If what's written in this, this January 7th letter is legal or not, yes.
I, I defer to you, Glenn, as you're on your Select Board seat, is I would assume that the Select Board would've gotten all that wording from town council, or you would've at least reviewed it before you voted on it. Just guessing.
That is a possibility, but I, I can't speak to being a definite, because I don't know if, if Chris, because Chris is the one that would've brought that forward to town council, so I don't know if he did it.
Oh, and then he talks, he contacts him, and then...
Right. Chris is all, right, Chris does all the contacting with town council.
If the complete board of Selectmen, well, had knowledge of this letter, wouldn't there be three signatures on it?
No, it's just from the Chair.
Right.
It just has to come from the Chair?
Yes.
I see.
It's like a letter from planning, same thing.
But going back to your, what you originally said, Bob, I, I think it's, I think it's feasible, if you will, for us to propose that question to town council, to, you know, for anything to reassure that we are acting according to what the law states, you know, especially if you're questioning it, and if it's a sick question, but if you have concerns whether it's accurate or not, and I think that's, I think we should do our, our part is to ensure that that is accurate, so we can move forward on it.
So our next step is get an opinion from town's council regarding the proposed zoning bylaw amendment for a solar moratorium.
The January 7th, 2019?
I'm just gonna ask that, that, Bob, will you make us a motion so it's a consensus, if you will, of the board, to move forward with that?
I would do that.
Something's gotta go to Chris, and Chris has got to contact you.
I'd like to make a motion that town council review the validity of the January, the letter from the Select Board, the January 7th, 2019, letter from the Select Board to the Planning Board regarding large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems moratorium.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh...
I'm gonna abstain from the vote. Only reason being is because this came from the Select Board, but that's not gonna impact sending this forward.
Okay, so we got our first step. Can't do two things at one time, miss.
And then once we hear from the...
Once we hear from town council, then we schedule a public hearing?
You'll have a list of the other articles, so that will just be one of them that, that's on the list.
Okay, and it's, it's on the list already, so I'll leave it there for now.
Yeah, okay. I would also challenge this board, I mean, I know we kind of talked about timeframe as, as well, as far as when it comes time to get things going, but for some reason, that moratorium, you know, either way, if it's approved or denied, I guess, that we have some type of, you know, we are moving forward on new bylaws for solar. Again, I, I do think, as my only personal opinion, I do think we need to probably look at the bylaws and kind of, you know, guide them a little bit better as far as we, from what we have now, because they are kind of vague. So I think as a, as a board, we probably look at the bylaw, bylaws and, I think, make them better for the future, moving forward. You know, I think we could look at other towns, see what they're doing, kind of what we did for, with the marijuana bylaws and stuff like that. Not to say that we need to change it, but I think we should do our, our part, at least look at what we have for current bylaws, which we all pretty much know, as far as it comes to the, the solar farms, but look at, is there things that we need to make changes to, or recommend changes to?
Well, my question to that statement would be, if we were concerned about the solar bylaws, why weren't we bringing these up, or discussing the solar bylaws five months ago, as we were discussing all the other bylaws that were putting forward for the May special town meeting? But if you think that they need to, sure.
I'm just one person on the board, but I think new information's probably coming forward since we've probably looked at those things. And I'm just saying, you know, so we can look for the future, make sure that we're, you know, we think we're addressing what needs to be addressed. Obviously, the state's thinking some different things now. I'm not saying that we do recommend them, I'm just saying I think we should do our, our part and look at them and feel if there is needs that we think should be changed to really, um, I mean, benefit or protect on either side, depending how you look at it, residents of Granby, and I think that's our part, what we should do.
But, you know, the thing is, we have not received anything as a planning board from a single resident of the town of Granby.
What do you mean, any complaint, or any...
Yes. We have, we have heard testimony during the public hearings for all the solar projects that have been approved or in, or are in the process of coming down the pipe. We, we have held public hearings and we've listened to our constituents, but I have not heard any complaints saying you should change anything.
Do we have to wait until we hear from them to do that?
No, 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 it's a good point.
To, to Glenn, you know, moving forward and trying to be ahead of any...
Trying to be pro-ep, for sure.
Because obviously, we, I mean, I think we did hear in some of our meetings where people were not, I'll say people were dissatisfied, but some of the things that are taking place is what the, some of the solar companies who were allowed to do and not do, but I think we can, that's where we can, I don't think it's stopping us from having public hearings to get the input from the public. And if we're not hearing any feedback from the public where they think, no, we're, we're happy with everything, then I don't think we need to change anything. But if we're hearing different feedback from the public as far as when they have a public hearings, then maybe that's always, you know, this is what they're telling us, and that's the only way we can get any information really, if we have a public hearing.
Well, Chris said he was gonna send us the information the state's recommending, and the forming a municipal electric commission.
Oh, is that the other thing?
Yes. So once we get that, then we can start and review it and see, see how it applies to, how it applies to Granby. And I think we discussed the moratorium. If it goes into, if we, if, if we go through with it, if the Select Board still wants it, we can still have it in place for the, the, um, the May meeting. And anything that's, and this is where, this is where it gets a little sticky, is anything that's in the pipeline, even if it's, even if it's the applications in and they've paid their fees, according with their, to what they're suggesting this moratorium will have effect, will, will create, will, will stop them. Which I believe is gonna open us up to some legal ramifications.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but I think it'll, it'll, it'll stop the, stop us from making a decision, only. If the applicant wants to go ahead and keep, you know, keep going with the process and spend any money they have to, then they are free to do that, knowing that they might be subject to changed bylaws if they get changed.
Yeah, they, they cannot go forward with construction while the moratorium is in place.
Because we can't make a decision.
Right.
Right.
But they have a special permit, they can't go forward.
Yeah, it's up to the applicant if they want to keep going, or if they want to wait.
Right. No, but my, my point is, we can continue moving forward, get the information from the Select Board, from Chris, and then if they still want the moratorium, then we, and, and they reword it so that we're not in any kind of legal jeopardy, it's not gonna, we're not gonna prove anything between now and then, in other words.
Correct. And we have until March 13th to get everything ready that's going for the May.
So this Red Rock Solar then, who waited before they submitted, they waited till after the town meeting, and now they've submitted, then they're in jeopardy?
They are.
Yep. If the moratorium goes into effect the way, the way they've asked us to do it...
So if the moratorium goes into effect, that gives the board time to come up with some suggestions to modify our solar bylaw. And then they go back, that goes to town meeting. And if town meeting approves those, then Red Rock would have to comply with the new standards.
And, and it may only be, we may just come up with just a few little things that really aren't gonna, you know, cause them to spend millions of dollars to...
So, for example, if you added a bigger setback than what they show on their plan, they would have to modify the plan to comply with the new setback.
Right, and that, and the whole, and, and the same thing would hold true as well. You would say for moratorium, we were talking about a moratorium, and we're discussing bylaws at this point, new bylaws, and if they were there, and they didn't have a special permit yet, would those new bylaws take effect before they're, so in other words, they're going, they're doing what they're doing, they're following the process, but no special permit's been approved yet.
Right.
In between then, the, the new bylaws are passed, their special permit has to agree with the new bylaws are in place at that point, or no?
Well, you know, the answer is yes, but, so, yes, if they don't have the special permit, they have to comply with the new bylaws, unless they take advantage of zoning freeze protections in the zoning act. And they can do that by submitting a subdivision plan to lock themselves in under the old zoning.
Can you do that on a moratorium as well?
That would protect them from the moratorium.
So what, I'm not following, what would they do?
So, what's, it's confusing, but the legislature, you know, has listened to the development lobbying. And developers would have, have gone to them and said, "Look, we've spent a lot of money on putting plans together, and then if a community comes along and adopts a zoning bylaw that would prohibit or delay that project, that costs us a lot of money." So the legislature has, has agreed with the developers and said, "We'll give you a way to protect your rights. If you prepare a subdivision plan prior to town meeting, you can lock in under the old zoning." So this happened in Charleston, I'm also a town planner, where they proposed and adopted a solar moratorium, but solar developers submitted subdivision plans to gain protection from the zoning freeze, to gain protection as a zoning freeze under the old bylaw.
I'm not following where subdivision plans come in.
Well, that's, that's with the zoning act...
They're not putting a subdivision in.
The legislature amended the zoning act to provide that loophole. So it's state law, that gives them the stability.
Very similar.
It doesn't make sense, but it's there.
If they're not putting up a subdivision, they can still...
That's right.
Go through that little loophole.
Yeah. Saying they're putting up a subdivision. Pardon?
Saying they're putting up a subdivision, when they're really not?
Yeah.
Well, it's really not a loophole, because, because that's what the, that's what the government did to protect them against the other side, so it's not really a loophole, right?
Yeah, depends on what side of the fence you're on, right?
Well, I guess, right, but, I mean, they put that, and they put that in place, so they, right.
So then, when we, I'm sorry.
No, no, keep going.
So then, when we, if we vote on that, on the solar project, do we have to also vote as a subdivision?
So what happens is, the developer or the owner would submit a subdivision plan. They can start with a preliminary plan, which is fairly easy thing to put together, and submit it to the Planning Board before town meeting. And then they have seven months to submit their definitive plan, which is a little bit more expensive to prepare. And if they follow those timeframes, they're in effect immune from the moratorium. So they could continue to go forward with their solar development.
But couldn't it just be a subdivision of the property? And didn't we just see this happen here with Dickinson Solar?
Yes.
When they, they subdivided some property, so it doesn't necessarily have to be a housing subdivision, it's a subdivision of the property, making one big lot into two.
Right.
Or whatever.
Okay, okay, I see where you're going with that.
There are, you know, there are two kinds of subdivisions. One would be an A and R, which is very easy to do, and that protects you from changes in use for three years. And the other is a definitive plan subdivision, which gives you eight years of protection from all changes in zoning. So, and as you mentioned, they submitted the A and R type of subdivision plan. So they're locked in under the old zoning for use only for three years.
So if, if it's not, if it's just one large clump of land, just one?
So, right, they could do an A and R plan and create another lot out of that large parcel, or they could do a subdi, a definitive plan into two lots with a new subdivision road. road.
So, they would break it into two?
Right.
And put the solar project on two lots? Or would they have to come, they break it into, then would they have to come back and make it one?
No, they don't have to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just not following it.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense, but that's the way it is.
So, in effect, they potentially could.
And I don't know whether they're aware of that, but most developers are.
I'm sure most planning boards are, but, you know.
So, as I mentioned there, Charlton, we had five or six of these plants come in to avoid the moratorium, and they've been processed and have gone forward.
They could, they could give them a, okay, so, they could issue a permit, even though the moratorium was on, if they went that way, subdivision. But then, if, if any changes were made to the solar bylaw, if somebody comes in after that, they're subject to the solar bylaws, they, like is the same as always they've been?
Right. So, if they don't have that protection, they're subject to the new bylaw.
So, kinda going back to what Bob was saying, that there are steps that someone could take to protect himself against the moratorium or against changes to a bylaw?
Yes.
There you go.
That's, that's why, that's why we should, we should get this information from Chris and start and review it to see how it would apply or may apply.
I guess that piece you've got right there is one.
Is some of it, but the rest of it, let's get the whole thing, and let's go through the whole thing and see if there are any changes that we would recommend to bring to town, town meeting.
The state made a change last November on limiting the size.
They made a recommendation, yes, there's a whole list of rec...
The recommendations, and then they didn't, they didn't state anything, they just made recommendations for the town that they want to follow on that.
But I'd also like to see the information, which was not part of that, I don't believe, of forming their own, uh, utility.
No, no, that wasn't part of it.
So, this is another reason why they were, Jay was looking for a moratorium, didn't explain that to us, but until this last meeting, the, the joint meeting, so it'd be good to get all this information, all these ideas that these guys are, are discussing, and get them to us, so that we can review them.
And then there's, yeah, well, that would be one of the changes you can make in the bylaw to, um, I don't know if you can do a preference for, um, open fields where you don't have to take down trees and that sort of thing, I don't know, as you can say that would be the first preference, I think that might be too much of a limitation.
Again, and I explained this at the joint meeting, that you're singling out one industry because you can clear cut for, um, mining, uh, the, what do they call it, earth permits? Gravel pits?
Gravel pits.
You can do it for farming, if you just wanna clear 40 acres to plant corn, you can do it for subdivisions, so, that's why we gotta go through all this and be, the planning board, this is all under special permit, so we already have a lot of oversight on every project, on what we feel, um, again, buffers. There's certain areas where there may, there may be, um, reason not to allow them to clear cut as much as they'd like to because of, you know, certain reasons, and we, and we can disallow that. We can make it a condition that the 30...
We're singling them out by having the bylaw to begin with. Right? An industry, we're singling that out just by having that bylaw.
But, yeah, there's no reason why you couldn't have a standard for tree clearing, if that's legitimate, and the state sort of encourages that as well.
But, but I'm saying, we can already do that without the bylaw in place because it's a special permit, if we've got reason for it. This is my, this is my point.
Bob, while you're gone, I had a recap on your question. There are, or is, an avenue where someone who brings forward a, like Red Rock right now, there's actually steps they could take, so they would actually, a moratorium and/or new changes to bylaws wouldn't affect them, they would still follow underneath the old bylaws.
Such as the subdivision of the property?
Yes. So, those are good things to know, because like I said, and it's going back to Jim's point, trying to rush things, go too quick for some things, you, you kinda miss a lot of information that's important to know, and, and, just what you stated there, I'm sure a lot of people do not know that.
So, do we need to, um, physically respond to the select board? Do we need to send them the letter of response, or?
Well, I think the motion to ask town council, I think, for clarification is, you know, will give you the information you need.
I think we have to find that out first.
And then we have to, then we, then we respond in writing to them?
No, no, we just take it ourselves.
I'm just wondering, do we have to respond in writing?
I don't think we have to respond in writing.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
No, you don't have to.
We're just following...
Well, no, depends what town council's decision is.
Well, this could be...
If town council says, "No, you gotta, you have to do what this January 7th letter says," okay, fine, we do it.
But I still want them to clarify it, that letter, that letter needs to state more specifically what they're asking for, not an open-ended moratorium, because that's, because that's not, from what I've read, it's not legal. And, and again, it's not a matter of just being legally legal, I don't want the, I don't want the town or the planning board to be put in legal jeopardy by doing something...
You know, as, you know, the planning board, you have the right to amend that language to something that you think is more acceptable.
Before it gets to the public hearing?
Um, you know, as, well, as part of the final article that goes to town meeting.
From my understanding, so when we have a public hearing, as far as presenting a moratorium, we're basically gonna present to the public the pros and cons of it, and the public can get their input. If, if everything goes forward from our, as far as legal counsel, and then go in front of the town body just to vote yes or no on a moratorium.
And what's the vote requirement on a moratorium?
Same as any zoning article, 2/3.
2/3.
Okay, so we're, we're done with that? Cause we're waiting on town council then? And who's contacting town council?
I placed the call, uh, into him on Friday, hoping he would have responded prior to this meeting.
So, you basically started?
Yeah.
Should we back up and make, seeing as we're gonna get billed for this time, I would assume, we should make a motion to...
We did.
Okay, yes, we did. See, you were paying attention.
Yes.
Even though we abstained.
Okay, so we're done with this piece?
We're now, yes, we are.
So, an update on the proposed bylaw changes?
Well, do you wanna go right to the Perry Hill and the other two?
We can.
That might zip a little quicker. These are just, it's just kind of reminder, follow-ups on things that weren't done. So, we will take 59 Perry Hill. This is just, um...
Thank you.
Take one and pass along. What was done before, on her...
Oh, sorry. I'll sign one for, uh, perhaps.
Okay, um, October 22nd, there's the, um, the zoning code officer, building inspector, his letter where he was listing all the violations, and, I'll read that back. On page two of the October 22nd minutes on your new business, um, that's Jim when you, when you renewed the letter from the building inspector. So, then we wanted to do a joint public hearing, but we needed more information.
Okay, so, the way that worked out was, they, they were approved to build a 12, a structure larger than 1,200 square feet by both Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, correct?
Yes, except for ZVA said no business could be conducted.
Correct. So, since then, they've put up a corral, a, um, a viewing stand, which, which they're allowed to do with a building permit, doesn't have anything to do with planning or zoning. They've been accused of, um, or been questioned if they're running a business, they claim they are not. So, until someone comes to us and tells us that they're running a business and can back it up somehow or other, then they're, they're within their rights to do what, what they've done.
But, okay, um, I thought we needed more detailed plans for them to come back, because they came back with, um...
If they were, so, so if they were gonna come back, because it's allowed by special permit, if they were gonna come back and say, "Yes, we're going to run a business," then we'd need the detailed plans.
And they...
Which would, which they would have to show us, parking and, and how many, you know, the, the whole nature of the business of what they were, what they were doing and how they were gonna operate it. But nobody's come to us asking for a permit.
They, well, they kind of halfway went through it, um, I didn't print that part, but they, last time they came through, they, they sent this, and it was a viewing shelter and all that, and we said we needed all the details and all the big plans, that's the piece they haven't come back with.
They haven't filed, they have, have they filed an application to run a business out of there?
I don't know that.
I, I think what Will is getting at is that they have done more than what they had proposed to the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals.
Right. With, with...
My point is, though, Bob, they didn't need to come to either boards to do what they, to do what, to do what they did.
But if I'm not mistaken, the planning board, or, they were, they, meaning the Bruce's, I believe that's the name, yeah, were told that they needed more clear concise plans, they came to the board and said, back in the fall, and said, "I cannot get those done due to not being able to get a survey or to do them in the timeframe that the, the planning board has given them," and he requested an extension of some sort.
But we didn't say...
I don't think it said that.
It doesn't say that.
He was looking for some leniency in the timeframe.
And I think that was in his letter that he sent.
Maybe that's what it was, a letter.
Um, because he sent pictures and everything else along with that. But, yeah, it's just, as I was going through, here's what we did from the planning board for the town's annual report, I came across these two things that said, you know, well, they never got finished, they never came back to us to finish whatever they were supposed to do.
Well, that, that's on them, so they can, they can't run as a, as a business, if that's what they were applying for.
So...
So, now, if, if that's what they wanna do, they've gotta come back and start the process all over again.
Did this question prompt us to whether that's a disqualification or a...
No, no, but, um, our bylaws state that if it's, if it's open for business, they have to come before the, the board for a site plan review.
Okay.
And zoning, I believe, too, both P, Planning Board and zoning. And more than likely, it wouldn't be denied, because we've got plenty of them in town, it's just, you know, we wanna make sure certain things are in place, parking...
Like a site plan review process?
Yeah.
So, and the next step would be, I mean, he could, if he hasn't paid any money, he hasn't started the process, basically, and he hasn't, I believe he's submitted everything he needed except for paying and except for the detailed plans.
So...
So, if he is, in fact, running a business there, it would be up to the building inspector to start that ball rolling, right, saying...
He'd have to hit him with a cease and desist, yes.
Yeah, before, if we finally come back and say, "Okay, I guess I'm gonna finish it now."
Correct.
Okay, I get it.
Read the last paragraph of the, the letter from the zoning enforcement officer.
And that's true, that's what Jim just said. Right? Why not read it?
But there's nothing in our, our bylaws, they call for them to come to us if they're gonna put up lights or a fence.
It's more if they're running a business.
So, in other words, we have to wait for it to shake out through the building department?
That's the way, is that what you read it? Yes. When it shakes, you say that, you just couldn't hear that.
I didn't hear it. I wasn't...
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so that one's done, found me right along.
So theoretically, if it's determined that he's running a business, the zoning enforcement officer could issue a cease and desist on the business use and make them come to the planning board for...
Okay, here's Mr. Lamro. Pass down, please.
Keep going.
I know, I'm doing it my first time.
Now, um, the attachment with that one is just the approval of his, the site plan review is for the, um, the building that they have by the, it's a place there, the old car dealership there, that's what the site planner, just as an information, it's not, what the problem is, the problem is up the road, coming back this way, where they have the, um, all the piles of wood chips and everything else, and we had sent a letter October 10th, 2017, to the code enforcement, saying blah, blah, blah. He did come before the board, May 22. Page three. This is an old building, it may not hold.
It's definitely rattling.
Now, my house was, was actually moving. And, um, they were supposed to come back to us with, uh, detailed plans, and they have none.
Nope, they haven't. They also said they were gonna put screening in.
That was from 2017. So, does that require a letter from us, or?
I think, I... It would require a letter from us to the zoning, list, list, zoning officer, enforcement officer, listing out the, the, the issues of zoning, all the infractions.
Okay, um, I can draft one up and we can look at it at the next meeting. Does that work for everybody? Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Sure, top of your list.
And he did say back then that he was going to put screening in, and he hasn't done that, I assume.
Yeah.
It's kind of a nice...
Now, the question is, do you want to work on the bylaws now, or do you want to choose a separate date that it doesn't have the walls about to come down around us?
I thought we were done with the bylaw revisions.
Oh, no, we didn't go through everything.
No, we just pulled out of the end and then just make it through.
Oh, no, the big thing, we did the big thing, we did the use, scheduled use.
There's some, Jim, you're not going to be here, right? Move forward for a couple meetings, or meeting at least one, four meetings.
You're going to miss the March 4th meeting.
Correct.
Who is?
Jim is. So, with that said, I would postpone this, oh, further to, well, I guess we can meet.
Oh, you've got a limit there.
That's what I mean, so, that's what I'm wondering.
March 13th, according to this.
Yep, that's...
For the package to be sent to the select board.
Two weeks from Wednesday, this Wednesday. Jim, are you not available the whole week of the fourth?
Correct. Well, I come back on the 8th, so I'm available on the 9th.
That's a Saturday.
I know.
But that's when it's available.
Well, are we meeting?
We're meeting on the 11th, but you're cutting it off a post for me to get everything tidied up and any changes.
You know, we've gone through these a bunch of times, I don't think it's really necessary that...
What are we missing?
Okay.
Well, might as well just run through them right now, but I just think they're all overdone with.
Okay, you want to do that? Now, we did have some, okay, according to Bill, we do not need to do the fee schedules and the ADA compliance for sidewalks because they're part of the subdivision, and that only requires a public hearing, not special town meeting.
Correct.
So we could include them in the special, in the first public hearing, right?
It would be a separate advertisement.
Yeah.
Because you're amending the subdivision regulations as opposed to the zoning bylaw, but you could do them the same night.
Okay.
And then you can adapt them that night if you wanted to.
So there's that, and you did, Bill, you had some questions on the business estate lots.
I did, I just had some suggestions.
That's our new piece that we...
The business estate lots.
Put it, you have that, 5.13. Well, I think I sent this to everybody. Actually, you had more, business estate lot.
Is that the letter from Bill?
Yes.
Email dated January 27th.
January 27th.
That's what I have on the hand.
Okay, just print something.
More your questions, Bob, or Bill, or suggestions?
So the first line says that business estate lots shall be permitted in the GB mixed use and industrial districts. So it wasn't clear to me whether that industrial includes I, you know, I and I-2.
Oh gosh, not the landfill thing again.
So, okay.
You also had a...
So then you would not allow it in I-2. That's right, I got more clarification on that at the last meeting, so. So maybe just say industrial I to make that clear.
Clear.
Industrial I, oops.
Yeah, industrial one.
Okay.
Then the second sentence of the, of the business estates lots bylaw states that the applicable dimensional regulations are those in table 2 in the bylaw. The mixed use district is not listed in that table, it has its own separate table. So if you're going to allow it in the mixed use overlay, you should need to reference the table on that section as well.
And what did we hear there?
And then the last comment was, paragraph number 5 calls for a 150-foot width at the front building line, and I think that was lifted from the residential estate lots bylaw, where the frontage for the IRS and IRM district is 150 feet. That's also the same for GB, 150 feet, but it is 200 feet for the IIQ and MU districts. So the question is, do you want to leave it at 150 feet or make it similar to the frontage requirement of those other districts?
So it's 200 in the industrial?
Yeah.
In the I-2 or just, or the industrial is?
I think it's both, I and I-2, and MU it's 200 feet frontage requirement. Since we're not allowing it in I-2, it's, it's, you know, it doesn't make any difference, but...
Okay, so table 2, we don't have business estate lots listed.
Right, so that was one comment.
You're not creating them.
So we need to add that. And, so what are we saying about minimum lot size and are we taking everything that's...
What are you saying, do you want to be consistent with 200 as far as the industrial is, or do you want to just leave it at 150?
150 is structures other than dwellings.
What's that?
150 is structures other than dwellings. I don't see, and also a single family. I seem to be getting myself all the wrong answers.
I mean, you can leave it at 150 if you think that's sufficient width for a business estate lot, or you could go to what the frontage is for the district, which is 200 feet in the industrial and MU districts.
200 feet's an awful lot in a business district, our business district. There are a lot of business districts.
These are sort of narrow frontages and then deep in the back.
Yeah. I don't see it as a 150 feet, that's a good size frontage.
And the estate lots in a residential are 40 feet, not 50.
So about in general business, mixed use, oh.
Yeah, I didn't...
We don't have mixed use as a category.
I was just talking about the lot width, I didn't comment on the setback.
No, no, I'm not talking setback, I'm talking about the, in an estate lot, or a flat lot, there's 40 feet of frontage.
Okay, okay.
Not 50.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not mixed use because we don't have mixed use as a category anymore.
What's that?
It says business estate lots shall be permitted in the GB mixed use and industrial I districts. We don't have a mixed use.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we do.
It's an overlay district?
It's an overlay district. Mixed use development overlay district.
Oh, yeah, that's the one that didn't go back over.
Right, so I didn't comment on the frontage, I think it's, you're right, it's the same foot, it's 40 feet in the residential, and it's 40 feet proposed here.
So we can't put that in the chart here because we don't have the overlays listed in the chart.
I think it is, I think you have all the overlays listed on the, on your draft.
Well, that, we need to put it in.
Well, we have, so overlay districts, we have flood plain district, which is FWD, which I think is a combination of the flood and, well, then we have water supply, then we have AP agricultural irrigation, we don't have any of the other districts.
No, on this, on this page that you provided, you have overlay districts, and you list them all.
Right, but we don't list them in this table, I was trying to...
No, only some of them are listed there, right.
So we don't need to add it to this table?
Add what?
The business estate lots?
I think you could handle it just the way you've done it as a separate bylaw.
Okay, stop trying to think about that one, right? Okay. So we're leaving it at...
So I think the feeling is just leave it as it is.
Okay.
Unless you wanted to increase the width, but I, you know, if you're comfortable with 150 feet, then that's fine.
Okay, so...
There was a typo in that paragraph 4.
Paragraph 4.
The state lots have a minimum street frontage of not less than 40, you have 4th.
That was a test to see if anybody really got this.
And then an excess width of not less than 40 on the second line of paragraph 4.
Well, I was consistent.
Right.
Just trying to pass as a 4th, over 4.
New word, okay. And we are going to do the special permits, that we've got to get done. That says, refer to the chart. One of your, oh, that's the same thing. Attention. Oh, that's done, same family was okay, business estate lots done, the solar, I'm leaving on the list, we'll get back to that. Special permits, fee schedule, I had a question on fee schedule. Get my fee schedule. That was the subdivision rules and regulations, so it's a fee schedule. This is where the change we were making was adding small project, medium project, large project, and adding consultant fees. My question is, when we build for the solar panels, when it started out, they had a nice big footprint that we were, you know, we're 10 cents a square foot, now we're down to a little thinner in the ground, okay? Why can't we charge it on a different, you know, different setting, like per, so much per so many panels? That's it. There were some towns that do that, I forget.
I would agree, I would agree, we should look at that, but why don't we make that part of the other piece we're looking at?
Okay, why don't we look at the solar?
Why don't we look at the solar, and then we can, after we...
Okay.
In case there's some recommendations even.
Okay, so...
And actually, that'd be a great question for Bill. You know, if they're, if they're just pedestal mounted, you're only getting so many, you're getting pennies on the dollar for the square footage of the pedestal.
Right. Not have to pay their full rate.
Oh, that should be an interesting...
What's wrong, something wrong?
Uh oh.
Why don't we start packing up?
Yeah, I mean, I, so the other suggestion would just be to have a flat fee for peer review, which would be, say, $4,000, $5,000, no matter what fee.
I don't know what you're saying, but you better stop.
To relate the engineering review fee to just panels, little panels or something like that, they're going to look at the entire site as a whole.
That's interesting. They need to know what ways to charge it, if a town or city said to want it.
Yeah, but not only, I mean, your question is not only for consultant, but as well for monies into the town office, is that correct?
What's that?
The, we were charging, if they were using before like 4 posts, we were charging for that square footage.
Oh, right.
You know, which is nominal, of course, but then you look at the foundations that they have on Millennium Field in Mudville, you know, they're large, because that's a whole, whole...
Yeah, it's technology, it's, it's, you know, it would be building by smaller and smaller.
But it's square feet of fenced area, correct, I mean, that's, that's the area of the project.
That is, we've been wrong, but...
Okay, well, then if you clarify, you know, what this, what the square footage means.
Right, because I think when that first came up, the first one that came up, that's what we were told, that we'd be charged by, that we could charge by the square footage of the footprint for each particular nail. That's what we were charging.
So that'd be something to discuss.
Right, that's what we're doing. There's more money there for the town available.
I mean, we were covering the town's expenses and the peer review and all that.
Okay, I see.
Okay, that's all I have.
For our peer review, you have two projects coming in, Red Rock Solar and Dollar General, are you going to have an engineering firm do a review of the site plan?
Look, actually, we'll look at it and see if...
So you want to open the hearings first and then decide, or do you want to just assume that you needed to get that ready in advance?
No, I think we wait until later.
Okay.
It's typically what we do, wait to see what...
You would want that to...
And then we, we know more about what we would want, but, you know, and we've caught a lot of specifics, peer review, that we, what to look at. Because we've, we've done a couple of them without, without peer reviews too, so it depends on...
If there's drainage studies, I think you really need somebody to look at that.
Yeah, we typically look for that.
Okay. I had the draft of the Dickinson firm's solar, to know whether you want to just hand that up tonight, or whether you want to go over tonight, or what's your, your pleasure on that?
We should do that.
We're doing that.
We're doing the search again.
Yeah.
For the light squad.
I forgot the next one. So I basically decided to include as much information from the previous decision as possible because a lot of those conditions still make sense, they didn't change the project, you know.
All of it, everything should be included, no exceptions or modifications.
That's correct, yeah, so I just referenced that, would attach it to this decision so that it's clear. So just on page 1, the applicant requests that the planning board approve a modification of the special permit, the site plan approval granted to Brandy Solar, in a decision approved by the board on December 11th, 2017, decisions were quoted, et cetera. How reviewing the proposed changes to the solar where the planning board determined that the changes required a modification of the previous special permit, site plan approval under bylaw. Project, site remains at approximately 3 megawatts AC for the proposed facility, cited in the residential, single family unit, zoning district, and mixed use development overlay district. Then on the next page, just, you know, noting a vote of the board, it was approved 5-0. And then I drafted a summary of the modification. The revised project is fully shown on the plan, titled Loudscale 3 Megawatt AC The revised project is solely shown on the plan, titled "Large Scale 3 Megawatt AC Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Installation, prepared by WDA Design Group, originally dated August 28, 2017, with a final revised date of February 7, 2019." The summary follows. The new plan includes replacement of stationary solar modules with tracking modules in the southwestern portion of the array near Morgan Street. These modules are more efficient and will rotate to follow the sun throughout the day. The new modules are approximately 2 feet shorter than the stationary modules and will lessen the visual impact on surrounding properties and public ways. Tracking modules require greater spacing than stationary modules, thus the extent of the southern solar array is larger than the original proposed. The footprint of the northern array is smaller than the original proposed, allowing for greater separation between the array and the boulders. Access to and from Morgan Street on the western side of the property and the end connection to East Street on the northwestern portion of the property remain unchanged. Reduction in size of the northern array results in less impact to wetland resources as the panels and fence have been moved farther away from the wells and there are no new encroachments onto the wetland buffer zones by being expanded in the southern array. No new tree clearings proposed. With the southern array since further south along Morgan Street, the line of tree planting has been extended accordingly to help offer views of the project on neighboring properties. And then, I looked at this next section of change. I didn't, after made special permit findings or the special permit in the site plan.
It's like all of a sudden, it's just the conditions.
That was my sense. It remained the same basically, so why, why work on it since I didn't really need it? And then, the conditions, which I think is the most important part that, you know, we should look at. The conditions of the December 7, December 11, 2017 decision attached remain in effect unless otherwise modified, have following additional conditions. The applicant shall work with your boulders along Morgan Street and cite upon a suitable species of evergreen to buffer their mowers. The applicant shall promptly notify the board of the selected species and shall note the species on the completed ASGO plan. So, we talked about that with you, Bob, at the last meeting. Does that sort of capture that discussion?
Yes.
It was kind of left open-ended.
They agreed to do whatever they wanted them to do.
Yeah, they wanted hemlocks, but the hemlocks wouldn't fare very well.
Right, so, we decided let them work it out and then just let you know. Two, this is to Bob's point. The application of pesticides or pesticides is deemed necessary for the solar operator due to the presence of disease or invasive pests. The operator shall submit a plan to the planning board for its approval at a regular meeting of the board without holding a new public hearing. The plan shall demonstrate compliant, adaptable regulations and shall be the minimum necessary to preserve the vegetation without harm to wildlife or creation of nuisance on neighboring properties. Board may impose reasonable conditions to protect the neighborhood. Is that sufficient enough?
Yeah, this would go over the teeth now.
Three, and this is kind of a standard condition. Approval granted by this decision shall last and become null and void if the construction permitted by this special permit, site plan approval, is not commended within 2 years of the expiration of the appeals period asserted by the town clerk. The planning board may grant extension to good cause upon written request, et cetera, et cetera. The one other thing I wanted to mention was, I think you may ask, wanted to be sure there was, you know, decisions superseded the other decision. And then, on page 200, decision. Right after the goal call, this decision superseded December 11, 2017 decision.
Okay, good. I was gonna ask you about that.
Incorporated by the...
On page 30 at the top, just a little typo, the reduction in size of the northern array, missing that.
Okay.
That's the...
Payback to it. Payback to the board. She's holding on to that for like 5 minutes later.
Is this, did we have a wave of height on this one?
We did. The fence allowed up to...
Seven and a half feet, was it? Whatever the, the current electric code is.
Yeah, I saw that coming over the car, so I...
With the understanding that there would be a 6-inch...
Cap at the bottom?
Yeah.
Yes, right.
Crater crawl.
Not on this one.
Yes.
On Kendall Street.
Was it?
No, no, we discussed it.
It is Kendall.
That was Kendall Street.
You were correct. It's Kendall.
Cute.
You were correct.
Was it this one?
No.
No, it wasn't, okay.
Good, no, this next one was the fence he was talking about in the back too.
It's okay.
It's all the electricity going in and out here.
So, this makes sense as it's kind of being compared to the other one that...
So, don't add it in this one.
Well, let me ask this. But they are allowed to come with an amendment to the fencing if the electric code says that they have to do it. Because I don't think, I don't believe we knew that in the old, well, that's true.
In the original...
In the original approval, that it's required, let's say, 6 feet, I believe. The electrical code is required, 7, 7 feet is added now.
I think they said they needed 7 feet.
That's Kendall.
So, yeah, we, should we leave the provision here for them to be able to come back?
Right, so it's, right, I, I know it's wrong, it's bad, because it's, it's changing since...
Well, it's, it's already in here. Any modifications? Yeah, but without a public hearing, without a public...
Yeah, that was only for the, uh, straight...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That was only for the application of the pesticides?
Yeah. That's, that's something, when we do the bylaws for solar, we may want to add that in.
Yeah, it seems to affect that more than anything.
But to Bob's point, though, we, that will, that will affect this because we did, we did not, so, the one, uh, Kendall Street, we noted that, we proved that we had that one there. But this particular one does not have that, so...
I hate to say it, but I think, I think building code supersede the bylaws. You know, building codes of that nature supersede. Well, I would think so as well, you know, especially in a safety situation.
Well, I could put a, I mean, if a condition in there saying minor modifications may be committed, allow underary if necessary for building proposed, even that's one.
I would say if you're...
Yeah, don't need to do it.
I would, right, yeah.
Because that could come up. It's definitely possible.
I believe the fence was 7 feet tall, but it would be 7, but the top of the fence would be 7 and a half feet. Correct, because the ground would go with a little 6-inch crater crawl.
Right. A corridor corridor.
Yes.
And Grandy zip code is, needs to be corrected on the front page.
It's hopefully for so wide.
So, our zip code is 01033. We got 01070.
What's that?
Our Grandy zip code on the front page.
Who is it?
It's 01033.
Yeah, 01070.
I think it's not that one yet.
Is that the last one, sir?
I think so.
Really?
I'll throw the motion out. Make a motion to adjourn. I'm not sure if we're all done yet, but the motion's on the table.
I, I don't have anything else. Do you have anything else, Bill?
Uh, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll suck it, that one.
Oh, baby.